the Berkeley Zoning Board of Appeals. Thanks for attending. And our first order is the pledge of allegiance. I would ask that everybody stand, face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McLean, could we have roll call?
Yes, sir. Allen.
Here.
Butts.
Here.
Gesund.
Here.
Krug.
Here.
McAlpin.
Here.
Euler.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Okay, we do have a full board. Approval of agenda. We do have our agenda. Do any members of the zoning board or staff have any changes?
One change, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, seeing before you, uh, there are some communications items. Uh, we had correspondence from three residents regarding the proposed variance that's on the, the docket for this evening.
Okay, then we'll make sure we incorporate those at the public comment portion of our, uh, agenda for the, uh, application. Any additional? Seeing none, then I'll just consider the agenda set. Our next item of business is the approval of our minutes. We last met on November 13th, 2018.
Mr. Chair, do we need to, uh, have a motion and roll call?
I don't think it's necessary unless we do actually change the agenda. I think we're okay. Thank you. So if, uh, we've all had a chance to review the November 13th minutes.
Move to approve the November 13th minutes of the ZVA as presented?
I'll support that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Mr. McLean.
Butts.
Yes.
Gesund.
Yes.
Krug.
Yes.
McAlpin.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we have one item for tonight's agenda. This is for the Berkeley Green Lantern's property at 4033 12 Mile. Mr. McLean, I believe you can provide us a summary of, of the request.
Yes, the applicant, uh, Green Lantern, they are taking over the former Silla's property at, uh, 4033 12 Mile Road. They are proposing to add an additional, um, outdoor seating area. Um, the building is, is considered a non-conforming building due to the fact that it doesn't meet current parking standards for, for the space that's there. Based on the usable square feet of the property, the applicant, uh, would need 58 parking spaces. They're able to provide 42. Um, one of the things with, with an existing, uh, non-conforming building, if the non-conformity was not being added to, the applicant, uh, would not be required to be up to snuff on, on parking. They would be able to get by with, with what's there onsite.
Okay. All right. So they're seeking a, uh, variance from the parking standards. Required is 42, and that's a non-conforming number based on the previous use. And they're seeking to, uh, well, they need 58 and they have 42.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did any members of the board have any questions for?
I've got one question.
Mr. Krug.
Um, with reading the ordinance on this, the fact that that building's been vacant for more than 180 days, does that also now make it, like, the variance isn't going so much just because they're adding, wanting to add on this outdoor space, but the building's been sitting vacant?
Right, Mr. McLean. And I believe that applies to non-conforming uses. In this case, the use isn't non-conforming, it's the structure that's non-conforming.
Gotcha.
Okay. Yeah, the, the use was always permitted. Okay.
Mr. Allen.
Yes, um, this, the whole parking count thing was incredible. I pulled what little hair I have left out, uh, trying to figure it out. And, uh, I believe Tim's come across the couple of things he's gonna share with all of us, but, uh, what exactly are they grandfathered at parking count wise?
The property had 42 spaces, and that's, that's what they're able to, uh, to provide.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Okay. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Gesund. Um, the, uh, the available s- use, does that include the office, or is that just the dining area that's considered available use when determining?
I believe it's, uh, what with the, uh, the usable floor space, it is all areas. You know, I've got my definition right here, so... Your usable is... Basically, it's, it, the total floor space excluding furnace and utility rooms, uh, mechanical equipment, unenclosed porches, public corridors, public toilets, you know, whether located in a principal or accessory building.
Okay. And then the usable square footage from the previous restaurant would, would have allowed for 42 square feet?
Forty-two spots.
For, for, for 42 spots?
Uh, not necessarily. Um, but because that wa- that's what was there before, uh, it was our understanding that they've been deficient for, that property's been deficient on parking for a number of years.
Okay.
Um, as long as the non-conformity was not being increased, they're able to, they would be able to continue as-is.
And they're switching some of the straight parking to angle parking to allow for, for more spots, or?
Uh, there'd be one spot up near the, uh, the building. The outdoor seating area would have taken up one of the barrier-free spaces. They're able to re-stripe with angle parking to gain that spot back.
Okay.
I have a question. Sorry if I'm putting you on the spot. Uh, you may or may not know, but the existing parking count is grandfathered in. Um, with the building as it is now, any idea how much parking they're supposed to have?
It's gonna be pretty close to the, the 58 spaces, I believe.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Any additional questions from any members of the board? Okay, thank you. At this, uh, Mr. Allen, yes?
Sorry, one more.
Sure.
Uh, running along Thomas Avenue, Tim, um, there's nine parking spaces, the nine having a question mark after it, because the markings actually come out into the driveway on the, the Thomas Avenue side. Is that a countable space?
Let me flip the projector on. That was a question I had for the architect.
Great.
And I've got the photo when you asked me this morning. Um, if you look at the, uh, site plan here, um, those two, those two spaces close to Thomas, uh, where you see the, the one and one, tho- those are countable spaces. So your, your first two rows of parking in your rear lot have nine spaces in each row. I believe that was a typo from the architect with, uh, with only eight spaces noted on there. I did confirm that with the architect that those are nine spaces in each row.
Okay, and to the left of that, there's the angled parking space that's actually hanging out into the driveway area. Is that a countable space too?
Yes.
All right. No further questions?
No.
Okay, well, at this point, I believe the applicant is here. Could you please step up to the microphone, tell us your name, and tell us what your practical difficulty is with this property and why you need the variance?
I got a real hard time hearing, sorry.
Oh, if you could just give us your name and tell us the, uh, practical difficulty as to why you need the variance.
Okay, my name is John Spritzer, um, owner of Green Lantern, uh, you know, with the...
And I'm Bill Smith. I'm an architect with Rossetti.
So he's gonna, I think, take it on from here?
Well, I'll just mention, uh, just to lay out the technicalities, um, although there is adding on some outdoor seating area in here, the kitchen that John is planning for is actually larger than what the original was, so the dining space is smaller even when you add the outdoor seating. So the occupant load on the restaurant is actually smaller than what the original building was.
Okay. All right. Do any members of the, uh, board have any questions for the applicant? Ms. McAlpin.
Okay, so then, can you give us numbers between how many occupants there were and how many occupants there will be?
I, let me just double check here. I think we reduced this set to just be for the zoning, so I don't think it's got the occupant loads on that, because that would've been for the building permit. So I don't have, so I don't have those numbers on there.
Um, one more question, if I will, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, one of the, what, I think one of the concerns I've, I've seen is that this is a bar. Um, I've, I've been frequent, frequent patron of the location that's on 15 Mile Road. Um, I don't believe it's a bar. Can you tell me, or tell our residents, what percentage is, is truly bar space and what percentage is truly dining space? Because when I've been there, it's been more families eating. There's been, you know, I, I've seen an eightieth grandmother's birthday party. I've seen, you know, after Friday night football games, people gathering. I, I don't see it as a tri- typical Friday or Saturday night bar.
It, it absolutely isn't. Um, the vast majority of our, our sales are food. Um, the bar business is just a bonus for us. It's, it's an afterthought. Um, if you go to under restaurants past 10 o'clock, there's usually 15, 20 people at it tops. Um, by midnight, the bar is bare. There's nothing in there. So, uh, we really do focus more on family-oriented uh, food and drink with, uh, you know, we're, we're kind of restaurant, you can't come in there, you can't swear, you can't be loud, we kick you out if you do. Uh, we're really more interested for our family dinners.
So what percent then of the space, I mean, I, I'm thinking, and I, and I don't know specifics, is it more 30, 70? Is it?
We have, we have about, I think, I think it's right around 18 or 20 bar spaces.
Okay.
For, I think, 150 restaurant spaces, I mean.
Okay, okay, all right.
It's, it's 90, 10.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you.
Mr. McLean, I have a, one question. Has the, uh, city, when they indicate the occupant load is increasing, has the city had an opportunity to confirm and compare what the occupant loads was from the previous user to the proposed occupant load?
We have not, because permits and inspection, permits have not yet been applied for and inspections haven't been scheduled.
Okay, and do you have a way that that could be confirmed, that you could do that, know what the occupant load was for the previous spot, and then compare that to, uh, what they're, what they're proposing?
I can check with the fire marshal on, on what the previous occupant load was.
Okay, all right. Mr. Gesund.
I, is there any plans at, at all for valet parking?
We have, um, we've talked a little bit to the, to our neighbors, um, about using some of the, the diner next to us. It's not, we don't have anything writing yet, but we've, we've kinda have like a, we've talked and they seem pretty receptive to it, to using some of their parking next door, uh, for some of the staff, or having the staff park off-site. Uh, we haven't looked into valet parking yet, although it's completely an option for us, it's fine, um, to try to find some place in the city to, to park these cars. Um, but we have figured out a way to, I think, uh, get at least our staff off that parking lot and not another lot.
Okay. A, a big concern is not having the staff or, or the patrons parking in the neighborhood.
Absolutely, yes.
I have one more question now. You're adding outdoor dining, and that's seasonal, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, can you talk a little bit about how much that addresses your occupant load, or maybe said another way, if you didn't add the outdoor dining, how would your occupant load and required parking compare to what you're asking for now?
I wanna say the, I mean, the, the outside seating takes up one current parking spot that we, that is there now, um, which wasn't a very good spot as it was. It was really tucked next to the building, it was a handicap spot, really wasn't super accessible, um, frankly, kinda dangerous to the front door area. Um, so that is the one spot it would take. Um, as for the patio, I'm, like I said, it's the same thing. It's, patio's a really more geared towards that, kind of a lunch, uh, early afternoon crowd. Um, you know, typically Friday night at 10 o'clock, this isn't when the patio's being used. It's more, uh, you know, say lunch, you know, people coming from Beaumont, whatever, you know, so, and typically during lunch, those parking lots, they're not that busy. You know, we're not, we're not packed at lunch, you know, we're packed at dinner. Uh, so I think the occupancy out there on the patio is...
It's about maybe 20.
Yeah, 20 people.
Yeah, so I'm trying to get an idea that if in theory the patio were not constructed, to me it would seem like you wouldn't need 58 spaces. How many spaces would you need?
56, I think.
56, okay.
Something, or maybe even 57.
Yeah, might be.
Really negligible.
Okay.
The difference in the two.
Gotcha. Okay.
Mr. Chair, one item to note that I neglected in my report, is if the applicant were to install a bicycle rack on the premises, that would reduce their onsite parking requirement by two spaces.
By two spaces? Are they required to install one?
Only for new construction.
Gotcha. So in this instance, the answer's no?
No, but if they wanted to, that reduces their, their count by two spaces.
I see. So if people choose to ride and park their bikes, um, less cars there.
Yes, sir.
Take up two spaces with the bike racks. Thank you.
Is that something you would consider doing?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Euler.
How late are you guys gonna be open on the weekend?
Uh, on Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays, we are up until 2:00. Um, that's just a thing that's company-wide. Like I said, if any of you guys have ever been to 12 Mile, John R., or my 15-year-mile location, I mean, there's nobody in there past midnight. We just, it's one of those things, it's kind of a restaurant bar. We, we've just kept those hours over the years.
And then is it midnight?
We don't do, uh, bands or anything of that nature.
Is it midnight the rest of the time?
What's that?
Other days is at what, midnight?
Yes, yes.
I guess I have one more question. Tell me a little bit of alternatives. For example, have you considered not adding the outdoor area and just going with roll-up doors? Tell me a little bit about some of the alternatives you've considered and why they may or may not work.
We have, you know, with, um, with the investment comes, you know, some type of return. We needed so many seats to, to do that. Um, you know, the parking lot is, is slightly small. Uh, the building, good size, but with as big as the kitchen is, amount of seats, the amount of renovation the building needs, um, and all the different things we have to do, probably not. We, we really kinda need that outdoor seating.
Okay. So if you didn't add that outdoor seating, you wouldn't need a variance. Is that correct, Tim?
That's correct.
Gotcha. Okay. Hey, I don't think we have any more questions. You can have a seat now, and I'll, we'll open it up to public comment. And as I've indicated, now is the public comment portion of our meeting. If anybody has any comment regarding this matter, please step up to the microphone, let us know your name and place of residence, and let us know what you think. Good evening, sir.
How's it going? Kurtite, Berkeley, Michigan. Um, you know, when I originally, I, I came up here, 'cause I was, I'd heard that they weren't gonna have any decreased in seating on the inside, but even that, if you add the seating on the outside, it, it kinda leads me back to what I was coming about. And let me just say first, I'm looking forward to the Green Lantern being open. I'm, I can't wait, you know, 'cause, uh, we actually like their pizza, and we think the building looks really nice. So this is not about any, anything against, uh, Green Lantern, but, um, I lived at, uh, Beverly and Thomas in the 80s, and I worked at Seela's, and I worked at R and P Auto when it was across the street on Thomas. And we also went to Seela's for many years, and, uh, if you notice in, in the parking lot, they have that angled, uh, wall that separates the two lots. Well, in the 80s, that wasn't there. The reason why is when Seela's became so popular, parking was overflowing everywhere. They were overflowing into Infil's lot, they were overflowing into R and P's lot, on Thomas, on the streets. And, um, you know, so other businesses started taking steps to try to minimize the impact. And I know that's not their fault, but I just, I just get concerned when, you know, I hear, okay, so, you know, it was non-conforming before, if they don't make any changes, great, they, they can, they can just, you know, open up business, but they are talking about making changes. And when you consider the changes they're making, the first one was the elimination of one actual parking spot, which is a handicap. But people need to realize it was so busy at times, even before they, right before they closed, where they're gonna have the new sidewalk, which is on the, uh, side of the building that faces east. Um, there actually was three spots that were being used as parking spots for cars, and, and you were still having overflow into Dahl Hospital and onto Thomas. And, and so I, I just, really, I hope we, uh, use a little bit of caution, because there are options available as far as like the, you, you mentioned the, the windows that open up, whether it's that same wall that faces east, or whether it's the wall that, that faces 12 Mile. I mean, there's things available, and there's also, you know, be, uh, the other month that we had a thing in front of us where there was a, uh, somebody had bought a property that was zoned for parking. And I would bet that the reason why that was rezoned is parking, 'cause that was part of the problem that with, that Seela's was facing, 'cause that's right in that area, that is very low on parking, and I, that, that's just another, obviously, it's a more expensive option, but, you know, there are other options available, and I just, while I do like the way the building looks and the way it's designed, I just, I, I would hate to see what the park is gonna be like if they get as busy as I think they're going to be. And so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Please step up to the microphone. Say your name and your place of residence, please.
Uh, my name is Timothy Barnes. My place of residence, God help me, is in Royal Oak, uh, with regards to parking, anyway. Uh, I actually own the Dahl Hospital, Trae Soldier Shop now. Um, and I wanted to say that we look also, like the gentleman who was just speaking, we look forward to the Green Lantern pizza opening up. Our business model is people staying for hours playing games. So having this, uh, close to us, even the outdoor seating, um, is something we, as a new business, also very much look forward to. I myself would like you to grant the variance. Uh, we could certainly use, obviously, my, my outlook's a little bit selfish, we could certainly use a, um, uh, such a fine establishment close to us on that far side of, uh, Berkeley in the main area. Uh, I think this would definitely, definitely be a step forward in a city that's trying to encourage business. Um, I have not spoken, uh, to the gentleman from Green Lantern, but I just wanted to come out today and offer my support for a neighbor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can I have a question?
Sir?
Sure.
One of our board members has a question.
Certainly.
What about all the parking that's behind your building?
Uh, I...
There's at least 25 spots back there.
There are 18 that I own.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know how the rest are divided up between the school and the, uh, other establish, you know, I don't, I'm not sure how those, there's 18 that I own. What about them?
I was just curious on the, who owned what back there?
Uh, so, from what I understand, uh, the, the rest are somehow divided, uh, between the school, uh, the, the, uh, divided between the other places. I just don't have those numbers. I know what I have just bought. Um, the gentleman who was speaking just a moment ago is right, the two houses behind our area are both zoned for parking, but they have the houses on them. So I'm not sure, I know somebody has recently bought one, so I'm not sure what, how the other house is going, but they are both currently zoned for parking. City on one of them did turn down, rezoning it residential. Those are what I know recently. Uh, so I'm not sure what the city's planning, you know, beyond that, I'm just being informative. Uh, I have my 18 spots, uh, so that's what I know of the parking behind both the Dahl Hospital and that immediate area.
So the school owns the spots over closer to Cummings?
I, I do not know how that is divided up.
'Cause I noticed a whole bunch of parking signs have been taken off that wall. You can see where they were. And that's like 11 spots right there, that...
That sounds about right.
You know, Tim, who? I would have to look into that. I'm not aware of, of...
Which person will we be talking about on this map? I just, uh, behind...
See in the, the red area there, that's the...
Closer to Cummings.
Lantern, so, this is, yeah, just a photo.
That's Dahl Hospital right there.
Yeah.
Um, there's parking spots all the way across down here, all the way down here.
Okay.
And if you go down here, closer to Cummings, there's a white, used to be white wall.
Between, between, um, Thomas and Cummings, the whole back of, of the building that we're talking about, mine and, and the rest, is a almost complete line of parking spots.
Right.
So, yeah, I just, I don't know how they're divided up beyond my 18.
None of them belong to the city?
No.
No, I can tell you that.
Okay.
I was talking, uh, with the DDA today about that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else like to public comment?
Good evening. My name is Lori Zinzer, and I live at 3292 Thomas. Um, I too was excited. I'm all about new businesses. Welcome to Berkeley. Thrilled to death with your restaurant being there for some purposes, but I feel the impact on the, uh, quality of living on, for residents on that street will be impacted greatly. So, having lived there since 2010, there have been times with Seela's, um, the Dahl Hospital and Seal is both closing in the past year, where our street was just a nightmare, parking up and down the street on both sides. I happen to live on the east side of Thomas, where the first legal parking space is in front of my house. And, um, there's, you know, until from opening to close, I've always had people parked there. The parking lot was congested for most of the years that I've lived there, to the point where the overflow parking was on Thomas. And people didn't wanna get, take a chance of being in that parking lot even if it wasn't filled. And at this point, where they're already shy, 16 parking spaces for what's been allotted, um, it's of great concern to me. And I think that, um, right now, with that narrow street and parking on both sides, I'm worried about things like fire and ambulance and police access. And, um, I think we have a legitimate complaint. Um, I propose just trying to be, to compromise and be amicable, one-sided parking, as you've done on the street that's right off of inside a garage, 'cause I think you're gonna have the same situation. And I think that there's a safety hazard, um, aside from our quality of living going downhill. I think it's gonna be a very popular restaurant. All my friends are very excited to go there. I do believe it will be a bar. All people are talking about is a new bar at that end of town. And so I think that, you know, it's gonna be open till 2:00. Seal is closed at 8:00 and 10:00. Got a whole new thing going on from the hours of 8:00 to 2:00 a.m., different than it's been, very popular. Seal has had been there for eight ye- eight, 80 years, kind of a not-so-renovated place, not a hotspot in town, and it had a lot of, a lot of, uh, traffic. And to have a brand-new place with a lot of excitement and a lot of residents... And to have a brand-new place with a lot of excitement and a lot of residents talking about, you know, can't wait for it to open, I get it. But living right there, I just think it's going to be a nightmare and especially a safety hazard, and I'm very concerned.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. Wendy Zabrowski, Berkeley. Yeah, I live just south of 12 Mile on Gardner. And I deal with the traffic from the businesses all the time. I've complained for years. And I, I hear the gentleman say he talked to the DDA. She would like to reduce the parking requirements in, for businesses. And it's, you know, the residents, you know, really deserve to have parking on the street, you know, on our street. We, you know, the businesses, the overflow, it's happening there, it's happening there. And, you know, it really isn't fair. It isn't fair that, you know, there is that property at Cummings that you guys just denied. Perhaps they could buy that and build one? I don't know. And, and the thing is, is that if they don't add the outdoor seating, then they're good. It's a matter of that outdoor seating. And, you know, I'm sorry, but, you know, the encroaching into the neighborhoods, time and time and time again, just isn't right.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, please step up.
Hi, I'm Darlene Kamowski. And I've lived at the other end of the block, second from Beverly. Been there 55 years. So I've seen a lot of changes over the years. And I too am really welcome to see them come in and not have an empty building, and it'll be a good spot. The only thing I'm concerned about is, I think we need to work something out with the parking on Thomas. And I don't know whether, there's already signs up that you can, no parking right where it ends at Lori's driveway, which sometimes is a part, hard for her to get out of her driveway. I don't want to see parking on one side of the street only. Because I see that with my daughter in Royal Oak. She's on a block with that. And quite often, they end up parking down because they've got a couple kids and what have you, where they're, they're taking a good walk. And I think if, if the people, if we can get, I would suggest moving those no parking signs or parking permit only, so that the residents can park where they want to park. But I just think, I don't want to see it parking on one side. That's, that's my big concern, because it is a hassle. And even, you know, the guys that do Arlon and other neighbors in that area, they come with their big trucks. And I don't think they'd stand a chance. And I've seen, the people at Seela's, quite often, we will have parking in front of our house. But that's rare, because we're so far down. But I think if the people that are going to the Green Lantern, maybe if they've got to park a half a block down, they'll either find another place to park, go to another restaurant. But that's my concern.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mike Webby, 30-year resident here in Berkeley, do not live anywhere near the establishment, but looking forward to him coming here and been looking forward to it for some time now. The one point I think that no one's making, taking into account is the outdoor seating that would be open during the summer. And now, the other aspect that no one's talked about is that the way that people commute, commute to and from establishments, restaurants, bars. Uber is, wasn't a thing 20 years ago when Seela's was popular, or 30 years ago when Seela's was popular. Berkeley is a community of bicyclers and walkers now. And I just don't know if you will have that, you know, that need for the access parking with, especially in the summer when people are out walking and bicycling to Clark's or Amici's or 24 Seconds. You see bikes everywhere in the summer. So just take into account that Uber is a thing now and the community is healthier and better off by walking and bicycling everywhere. So I would like you to grant their, or grant their variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Good evening.
I'm Matt Fountain. I live across the street from Lori at 3293. And I just want to endorse what she has said. Again, we are, I'm very excited to have a new business. I hate turning onto my street every day and seeing both those buildings vacant. That's not what I want to see living in this community. But as well as her, I'm nervous about the amount of traffic. I never experienced as much traffic as I did when those stores were closing. It was a bit chaotic and a little bit, just didn't feel very comfortable. And I would definitely like to see the business prosper and thrive, but we do need to come up with something for our street, like Lori proposed, some sort of compromise so that parking doesn't impact our quality of life.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Sue Ballin and I live at 3214 Thomas. I've been in the neighborhood about 24 years and have not really experienced Seela's, excuse me, busy times. However, we always knew when there was a shower or a party because there was always parking on our street. But it only lasted for a couple hours and everybody kind of, you just kind of didn't fuss about it. I live on the corner, so I can relate to Lori's problem about people parking over your driveways because parents that drop off their kids and pick up their kids park over my driveway. However, mine's only for a few minutes, so I don't fuss and I just try to live with it. She doesn't have that opportunity. I am not one for the one-sided parking because I think that's going to create more problems for us. Some of us that have get-togethers or meetings at our houses, we have parking that would not be good enough for one-sided parking. I mean, they wouldn't know where to park because there wouldn't be enough parking. So I am really, I don't know what our options are. As far as parking, I think we do need to be concerned about it. We are all grateful that Green Lantern wants to come in. We're all looking forward to having great pizza. But if you live in the neighborhood, we're all concerned about the parking and the traffic. So I don't know what our options are, but I think we do have to come, come to something and not just allow people to park where they want. Okay, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else who would like to make a comment? Anyone? Okay, at this point, I'll close the portion of the public comment for everyone who's here. As Mr. McLean indicated, we did receive some public comments via, in writing. We did receive a comment from Ms. Zinzzer, who's here tonight. It appeared to echo what she said tonight. Thank you very much. Received a resident at 3226 Thomas. And she's suggesting a compromise for possibly parking, possibly on one side of the street, possibly permit parking. But she believes that finding parking on the street is not the answer. And believes the additional parking could be a negative concern. We also received a note from a resident on Princeton. And it appears that that resident is not in favor of the variance. So that closes the public comment portion of our meeting. At this point, I'll turn it back, actually, before I turn it back over to the board, we've heard some discussion tonight from many members of our public about perhaps the ability for this board to impose parking restrictions. And I highly doubt that we would have the ability, although the boards do have the ability to impose conditions if they're ripe to grant a variance. But they have to be reasonably related, and I don't think this board has the ability to address conditions that apply to public property. So that's my opinion. But with that being said, I'll turn it over to the board for further discussion. Mr. Allen?
Yes. We've, we've already established, and correct me at any point if I'm wrong here, there are 42 grandfathered spaces on that site. Okay? If you go through, we don't use capacity, seating capacity, to generate our numbers for parking. We use usable square footage. So the usable square footage requires 58 parking spaces. That's 16 shy with the grandfathered 42 that are already there. You add the additional square footage with the outdoor eating area, which would require seven more spots. So that makes you 23 shy at that point. And the other thing we need to keep in mind, and this is just my opinion, but...
Wait, is that correct?
Where'd you get the seven?
Yeah, where... I took the dimensions of that area and divided it by the 36, and it was 6.81 something.
Mr. McLean, I'm not sure I understood it that way. Can you clarify? I think what we're...
I'm correct, Mr. Allen?
When we add the patio, how does that impact parking and the additional? By adding the patio, is there an additional seven over the 58, or?
Not that I'm aware of, and I believe the architect could probably verify this, but I believe the, the outdoor seating is factored into the usable space, I believe.
Okay. I, I saw the border of the edge of the building move out to take up that parking space that's there. So I took the, bear with me for a minute while I unwrap this thing. Kind of trapped. The, that outdoor eating area is 13.5 feet wide. It's 32 feet long, which is 432 square feet. If you divide 432 square feet by 65, you get seven spaces. 6.6461 square footage is already included. Pardon?
Sir, could you come up to the microphone? So you represent, you are...
My name's Brian Lampkin with Black Diamond Construction.
From the construction, you can help Mr. Allen with this question?
I think so. In the area that they'd like to put the patio, there is only currently one parking spot permitted in that area. So by placing the patio where they want to, it eliminates that one parking spot only.
But it increases the square footage of the building footprint.
It's not a seasonal, I'd have to refer back to Tim.
Yeah.
So the way you figure out the parking spaces is you figure out how many occupants are using the building, and then you divide it by a certain factor, and that's where you get the parking. So for restaurant seating, you take, it's 15 square feet per person.
Is this city code, the zoning code?
This is building code?
No, we're relying on the zoning code, which I understand is a floor area ratio, a percentage of that, and that's how many spaces you need.
Based on the occupancy?
The nature of Mr. Allen's question has to do with the zoning code and the formula. And by adding the patio, the square footed usable floor area, which is the patio, I think his question, we're trying to clarify, is, and maybe an easier way to say it, is without adding the patio, do we know how many, what is the patio? What does it bring them up to? In other words, when they add the patio, the 58 that they need, that incorporates the patio and the existing restaurant, right?
I believe yes.
Yes, okay. All right. So the other codes, I don't want to say they don't matter, but for our purposes, we've got to rely on the zoning code. And if the zoning code says you need 58 based on what you're proposing...
With the patio.
And that includes the patio.
Okay.
Okay. What Tim's saying is that 58 number takes into account the patio.
So the bottom line is, with the patio, we need 58.
Okay, it's clear. So we're still 14 or 16 spots shy of where we should be under the code.
Okay, so for purposes, though, they've said they put in a bike rack, so that puts us to 12 shy, right?
14.
14 shy, 14 shy, okay.
I had one other thing I wanted to add.
Yes.
And this is, this is just my personal opinion, but I've seen it happen time and time again. The one area, it's a delicate balance. You want business, you want the town to be vibrant, you want it to thrive. But where a commercial district abuts a residential district is not really the place to get into a game of reducing parking spaces. It causes a lot of problems down the road. That's all.
Thank you. Any additional questions or just...
Just to throw something, add to his. This doesn't make Thomas any different than Tyler, Gardner, Griffith, Robina, Cumberland, Kenmore, all streets that have businesses on 12 Mile that park on existing street parking. Same thing on the Woodward corridor. If you're going to buy a house, a block off of, the first few houses off of a business, you've got to expect something is going to impact your house. And you look down, drive down 12 Mile, people park there, all the residents have the same issue. And I understand where you're coming from, trust me. But this doesn't make it any different than all the other instances on 12 Mile, on Woodward. That's just my thought. I mean, I want the restaurant to open myself, too. And I think there's plenty of parking in that area that could take care of this. And I've been to Green Lantern, and he's right, at 10 o'clock at night, there's nobody anywhere near the place. And I don't think it's going to be as much impact as everybody thinks it's going to be. It's not going to be like when Seela's closed and for those two weeks, everybody packed the place. Or when the Toy Hospital closed, or was closing, and everybody packed the place. This is just going to be your day-to-day business of Green Lantern that isn't that busy other than 5 to 7 o'clock. So I think we should take into consideration the extra parking spots that they can use on the streets. There's Cummings, there's Thomas.
Ms. McElpine?
Can I ask a question of the petitioner?
Yes, please.
How many employees do you have that we would take out of that parking lot that you could form an agreement with that would not be parking in the lot?
Staff?
Yeah, staff, I'm sorry.
I mean, for a building that size, probably on a, on a busy night, we'd probably have somewhere around 15.
Okay. And, and how do, how, is there a way to, to make part of the variance, some kind of agreement that he would, we could have some kind of condition that his staff is parking somewhere else?
Shared parking agreement?
Do you guys have a public parking lot that's within range that we could park at? That's not a problem. Like I said, we're trying to work with the neighbors to park there.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm trying to figure out a way to make, to make the residents feel more comfortable. I mean, like I said, I, I've been to the one, to your restaurant, at 10:30 and 11 o'clock at night. I mean, I, I know there's 25 people there.
Yeah, yeah, it's not busy in there.
And it's, and it's...
We like it that way.
Quite honestly, it's, it was my dad and 10 other football coaches that were coming there after a football game. I mean, and we were all leaving at 11 o'clock. So that's why I'm looking at, how do we, how do we make it work? And where, where could you find another parking area that's not busy during those times that your employees could park at? So that these residents...
The intent is to not have any staff parked in a parking lot whatsoever.
Right, okay.
They should be somewhere else. We, you know, we haven't anything locked down yet, but, like I said, we've talked to the neighbor. There's a lot across the street, there's some parking down the road. I mean, all of it's within reason.
Is that something that we can make part of the...
Well, I guess it depends on what we want to say, and it might be something we might want to see before we actually vote on it.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chair? What is the agreement? I also think it's important for this board that the members of the public, and some sort of agreement like that, I would opine, if that's the direction this board might want to go in, would have to be provided by the applicant, vet... would have to be provided by the applicant vetted with the other regulations at City Hall.
I don't think anybody's going to give me any kind of signed agreement. I think it's going to be a handshake.
Yeah, no, no, but at least, okay.
Whatever this board comes up with, if that's, we'll see. We have more discussions.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. All set?
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to add something.
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes. What our ordinance specifies is that if a business is within five hundred feet of a municipal lot without crossing a major thoroughfare, there's no requirement for onsite parking. The Green Lantern property is just beyond five hundred feet. We calculated that figure recently when the Dow Hospital property was purchased when we were looking at their business license. There is municipal parking just within that five hundred feet range from the Dow Hospital. So we're talking, you know, maybe, I don't know, it's just beyond. It's not a huge distance.
Seven hundred and fifty?
Public hearing is closed.
Okay.
Go back to the board.
So, so that's, just for context, you know, it's not, Green Lantern is not within the five hundred-foot threshold. That just kind of gives you a context of where the, where the closest municipal lot is.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Jazan?
If we were to have a signed shared parking agreement with the neighboring businesses for employee parking and for up to, let's say, fourteen spaces, would that, could that be counted towards their parking total and allow? And then they would have the necessary parking and they wouldn't actually need it? Or would we still need to pass a variance?
If they're able to secure a written shared parking agreement, which our ordinance does specify what you have to do for a shared parking agreement, if they're able to get an agreement for the fourteen spaces that they would need, then a variance would not be, not be required.
Okay.
They'd have to show a written agreement.
And to piggyback on that, if I'm not mistaken, the shared parking regions I've seen in codes has indicated that when you combine whoever you share it with, it allows to make sense. So you're just not pushing those, those parkers of the neighbor out to another street.
Correct, correct. The neighboring business would have to have surplus parking to, to be able to enter into an agreement. You'd have to factor in hours of operations of the two businesses so that...
Sure, if they close it.
Like you said, you're not just pushing the burden on parking.
So for instance, like the Berkeley country oven and the Dow Hospital, if they were each to do, let's say, seven spaces each, if they had those spaces to give, then we wouldn't actually need a variance.
In theory, sure. Yeah, yeah. If they can arrange it through other means without getting a variance, then they wouldn't even need one.
Mr. Allen?
The one thing I would warn this body about is take a good, long look at Vincetta Garage and the shared parking agreement problem there.
That's the problem. If you have an agreement like that, and let's say it's for two years, what happens after that two years, which I think happened at Vincetta?
Yep.
Gotcha, sure. And that went away, and then their problems came up again. Yeah, what do you tie it to, if the agreement runs out? Do they have to close? Do they?
Was there ever an agreement?
And how reasonable is that? Does the city, does this board even want to be involved? Someone's private agreement ran out, so, yeah. I, Mr. McLean, I do have one question. I heard someone during comment mentioned that there was some land nearby zoned P1 parking. Can you talk a little bit about that?
That is correct. There is, there is a parcel, if you look over, we can't, you can kind of, down in here, there's a residential lot that it was rezoned P1 back in nineteen eighty-six.
Okay.
And the parcel on the other side on Cummings, same thing. The thinking of the city at the time was that if you rezone those as parking, sooner or later, they will be developed as parking.
Okay.
And there were a series of rezonings that were undertaken by the city back in nineteen eighty-six. Some of them, some of the lots were developed as parking, and you still see two or three today that are zoned P1, but there are still houses there.
Sure.
The planning commission heard a case November, December, seeking a rezoning of one of the lots on Cummings. And then that was, that was turned down by planning commission and city council.
Rezoning from what to what?
From parking to residential.
So to go back the other way?
Right, the applicant on Cummings was looking to, he wanted to demolish the existing home and construct a new residence.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That being said, I have a question for the applicant. What have you done to perhaps secure those properties and build a parking lot?
You know, buy the homes and try to, the project's already way over budget and about this close from just being pulled anyway. We wouldn't have the budget or finance to buy a property next to it and try to tear it down and turn to parking lot.
Gotcha.
That's definitely something I think the city should look into across the entire board, but not something I think the businesses are going to do.
All right, and?
Way too costly. The Berkeley, those houses are three, four hundred thousand dollars apiece, some of them, I mean.
You can kind of see why somebody might want to rezonate the other way. And one final question. Were you aware of these requirements before you bought the property? Were you aware of that?
No.
Okay.
I had a question too.
Mr. Ular, yes, his question for you.
So if, if we say no, and you have to just, you know, build your restaurant on the existing footprint, do you have a plan for that? I mean, is that, is that doable? Is that feasible?
We have everything, you know, we have an indoor-outdoor, you know, kind of like area. The way, we'd have to go back to the drawing board and start redesigning things, yes.
Did I hear you correctly that there's only going to be, how many spaces to eat outside on the patio? Fifteen, is that what, fifteen to twenty?
Yeah.
So that's what, like, four tables? Three tables? I mean, that's, that's really small, right? That's... So I guess my, my comment to the board then is, what we're talking about really isn't going to make much of a difference, no matter what. I mean, and to the residents, the restaurant is there. And if it's busy, it's not going to be because of the four tables outside.
No.
So...
Thank you, sir.
Just an FYI, the bar area, the way it was built, I know you probably can't see the plans there, but it is indoor-outdoor. It would start the whole process over again. It would probably set us back three to five months and redesigning the entire restaurant. It's based on an indoor-outdoor bar seating area.
Okay.
The entire restaurant's built around that.
So if we said, no, you still have indoor-outdoor, but it'd be on the same footprint, is that what you're saying?
No, we'd have to take the bar, completely move it around inside the building, redo all the drawing, the structure drawing, stuff like that, so.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion by the board? Got one question for Mr. McLean?
Yes.
How far out of that five hundred-foot circle is the municipal lot, actually? Is it five hundred and fifty?
Probably about, that's, I would say, estimate, yes, pretty close to that.
Fifty feet difference.
And that's, that's just doing measurements through GIS, which, which aren't a hundred percent accurate. But from the Dow Hospital to municipal, it's, I believe, exactly five hundred feet. It's pretty close.
So it's just crossing another side street, basically?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
I'd just like to take the opportunity to ask my fellow zoning board of appeals members here to adhere very closely to the five points tonight before we do anything.
Always, good guidance. We are required by the ordinance to find that all five factors are satisfied in order to grant a variance. I think it's incumbent upon this board that the discussion and our motion, it's very clear from the record that we've sufficiently vetted that. Well, I guess I'll start with my opinion. Thanks, everybody, for their opinion. Thank you, members of the public. First thing I'd like to say is your design's wonderful.
It's beautiful.
It's awesome. And when I first saw it, I was wowed. And I think I'm hearing many, really everybody in this room, say the same thing. You've hired some quality architects, and I commend you for putting your time into this. Ultimately, whatever's going to go there, especially if it's run by you guys, I think is going to be high quality for Berkeley and definitely be very welcome in that area, especially if we've heard from residents and nearby non-residential property owners. So thank you very much. In my opinion, I think we're, we've heard that there's a couple ways this can be done. I'm hearing that there potentially could be some options. I'm hearing that there potentially could be shared parking. There is area nearby that's already zoned parking, although we've heard from the applicant that that won't work. And the option they would look into is going back to the drawing board to get this property work. I know the neighbors have been dealing with an underparked parcel for some time. I do have concerns that any additional need for, for parking, I just have difficulty adding already to the non-conformity. We've already heard that a restaurant in the same footprint can continue to go there. On the other hand, I do understand the way they're designing it leads me to believe that other than the outdoor dining, which is seasonal, certainly not going to be used in the winter, it potentially could have minimal impact because the inside floor area, even though it is floor area, they're expanding areas that are not going to be used for seats. So I guess that's my opinion, being one out of the seven members on this board. Does anyone else have any thoughts?
I would like to know the seat difference. I mean, that's a question that was asked and we didn't have an answer for in terms of, you know, Seela's, how many they had and what the Green Lantern would have. And if it is, in fact, less, which you represented, I think Mr. Architect said that. Where did that come from? Did you?
So our project architect sent an email to Tim breaking it down about a month ago so we can dig through the file and find out, we can reset it, what the numbers were.
So if it, if it is, in fact, a restaurant that has less seating than the previous restaurant, then the only, you know, adverse impact on neighborhood would really be if it's a more popular restaurant.
You know?
I mean, it's, it's, so...
I hear where you're coming from. Mr. Allen?
I'm wrestling back and forth with this too. I understand where Miles is coming from on this. But our ordinance is very specific. It's not based on the amount of seats. It's based on the amount of square footage. That's how you calculate the parking spaces.
Gotcha.
Mr. Jazan, yes?
We're very limited with the criteria we have to follow in order to grant a variance. As much as I'd love to, the criteria that we have to follow doesn't fit this particular project. So if there's other arrangements, like I mentioned, with the, with the shared parking or valet parking, with the understanding that valet parking wouldn't, would use that shared parking in addition to the employees, we could say no to this variance and you still could get the building that you're asking for. And just, it's, our hands are tied here as far as what we're allowed to grant a variance, the criteria to grant a variance. The physical dimensions of the property are not substantially different from other properties in the area. There's no physical anomalies associated with the property. One of our other criteria, the need for a variance, is not the result of the actions of the property owner or previous property owners. We, the project as presented isn't fitting the criteria we have to allow us to grant a variance, as much as we'd like to. And that's...
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments or discussion from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion for discussion purposes, whatever.
Mr. Chair, if I may. And this doesn't really have a bearing on the practical difficulty test, but the outdoor seating would be in keeping with, as many of you are aware, the Downtown Development Authority has developed design guidelines. And part of that is encouraging outdoor amenity spaces. And so the outdoor seating would be in keeping with, with the DDA's guidelines. And regardless of whether or not a variance is granted, I think there's, there's going to be a parking problem there. Let's say if you don't grant the variance, as long as they're not increasing the size of the building, they're able to, you know, legally get by with, with the forty-two spaces, you know. However, is that going to be enough? So I mean, I think either way you cut it, there's going to be a parking problem.
That's kind of what I was trying to say. I mean, there's going to be a massive parking problem no matter what we do. So it's, you know, we're going to have a parking problem with a more attractive building and four tables outside, or not.
Or are we going to end up with an empty building because you can't build anything in? And we're going to go back to the drawing board?
We do, as this board, we do have an option if perhaps we'd like to see some additional information.
I would love to see, I would love to see the email.
With a motion possible? Okay, I hear, I hear several members going in that direction as well.
That to me, I mean, I understand we have the five points. And, and I respect them, and they're, they're for a reason. And they're there to, to protect the petitioner and to protect us. But with what Mr. McLean just said, I mean, they are grandfathered with what they have, and they could, they could build within the footprint that they, with what the building is. I think, given the fact that they are taking less people space or the occupancy is less, that to me is, is a very solid point to stand on in, in, for, for me personally. Is there a way for us to get that, you know, I mean, where are you at in the, in the process of building? And?
Waiting on this, yeah.
What?
Just waiting on this.
Okay. So waiting four more weeks is problematic then, I assume? Okay.
Mr. Butts?
Well, I was going to kind of suggest that, but while you're on that train of thought, think about the fifty-foot difference that they're away from a municipal lot. It's fifty feet, crossing the street.
I, I... I feel very strongly that this, I, I believe they will be great neighbors. I believe they will be a great addition. I believe that Berkeley is a great place for the Green Lantern to be.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
We recently approved the business license for Gatekeepers, which is, is going into the old Dow Hospital building.
Yes.
They fall within the threshold of being in proximity to municipal parking. So by ordinance, you know, they would not be required to have onsite parking. So I think a shared parking agreement between Gatekeepers and, and Green Lantern could be a possibility. Obviously, I can't speak for the business owners, but that could technically have them meet, meet their requirement if they're able to secure a shared parking agreement.
Shake his hand. Well, I, I guess in that light, hearing...
And the, and the fact that we've, we've talked about the bike racks, and we've talked about the fact that we would, you would publicly state that we'll find a place for these employees to park. I mean, I think we're making some, some strong points here, correct? I mean, at least I'm feeling that way.
I agree.
Mr. Allen?
Part of me feels like doing all of this shell game crap is just moving the lump in the carpet to a different location.
You know, having a healthy, thriving business is a good problem to have.
It is.
And I've seen codes that require a very reasonable amount of parking and that new business or that restaurant or Topgolf, whatever it might be, there's people lined up to get in the place. People wait an hour. They'll take their page.
Six hours.
Okay. So it's a good problem to have. So I think everyone in this, everyone wants to have robust businesses. But as with any commercial area that's adjacent to residential, there is a balance. In my opinion, I think there's a couple options that I would like to see explored before we make a determination as to approve or deny this variance. I think the option of potentially looking into dedicated shared parking per the city ordinance with a neighbor could either reduce the need for a... ordinance with a neighbor could either reduce the need for a variance or eliminate the need for a variance depending on how the numbers come out. I also think that, what was the other option? I think that's one option that we can definitely consider. I'd also like to, piggybacking on what Mr. Ullar said, and I agree, Mr. Allen, that the zoning ordinance is what it is, what it is. However, I think this board has some discretion if we can get it to satisfy our standards into making a determination based on a specific set of plans, a specific floor layout that, because everything they submit, if we grant a variance or a variance with conditions, everything becomes the record, they can't just change the inside later. You couldn't make the bar smaller and then say, well, we get, we're the same floor area so we get 25 more seats, can't do that. So in my opinion, I think perhaps the applicants receive a lot of good input, heard from the members of the public. I think this board has done a good job to vet salient issues. But I think that there's solutions that may not involve quite as much or not a variance that could be explored and perhaps brought back to this board at our, as early as our next meeting. That's my thought. So in other words, I, what I'm saying is I think some more information would help us make a better compromise to minimize any negative impacts, but also give them the opportunity to achieve what they want.
I agree with you 100%. And one of the things on the next set of plans that comes before us needs to be clearly marked out, parking space numbers, because there was one that Tim had pointed out where there was actually nine per row and it showed eight per row. Those could be on there and quantified as parking spaces. That would be extremely helpful because this becomes a master record.
Sure. Now, with that being said, we do have to have a motion. What needs to make sure we go in that direction? But that's, you're saying if we do, that's definitely something that you'd like to make sure is more clear.
I will make a motion to set this aside until the next meeting, pending the explorations of the items that we were discussed here. A shared parking for one, the updating of the plans to be correct with the proper parking count on it. And am I forgetting anything?
Occupancy figures?
Yes, occupancy figures. Historic occupancy figures.
Not at this point, thank you. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion, any points that anybody would like to add to, in favor or against the motion as well as if, to perhaps give the applicants a direction as to what we may want to say?
I, I don't know. Just because it's, it's kind of an unusual motion where we have things we're asking him to do, like maybe we should let him, if he's got a question or.
Yeah, I would, I would just, I mean, I guess in the day of a phone, and if, I mean, is there a way to ask if maybe he could, see if someone can get this email? Just considering that it's a four weeks.
Several members of the board want to hear from you, sir, so adjust the line here.
I don't know if someone can call someone to find out if they can get this email, that's all I'm wondering.
I'm actually, my name is Pete, I'm John's brother-in-law, I'm going to be a co-owner as well in the establishment. First of all, I want to say I'm a past resident in Berkeley, been here for 10 years. I went to Arleigh La Salle, for those of you that remember when that place was still open. So Berkeley is near and dear to my heart. You know, what I'm hearing from the board is that we need to explore this agreement. You know, we've explored agreements with Country Oven. I know he's as far as going to go is, you know, do a handshake, handshake agreement. To be honest with you, whether we get an agreement in place or not, people are going to park probably at Gatekeepers anyway, you know. So I know when Seela's was there, they were parking the Dahl Hospital vice versa, they'll probably be parking our parking lot likewise. So we're, we're holding this up for an agreement that's probably not going to get done, you know. So I guess that's what we wanted to make sure that was, was laid out there.
To get anything right, it's not going to happen. They're going to give up their rights to their parking on their lot for us, it's not going to happen.
And you're kind of giving a message that, hey, you know, a new business, if you're going to renovate, you know, then it's going to be an issue, you know. So that's kind of what we're, we're hearing. We're trying to take a building, you know, when I was growing up at La Salle, that was my Green Lantern, you know. We went there every Friday night after basketball, but it's, it's in disrepair. So we're going to invest quite a bit of money in it and hopefully make a crown jewel for Berkeley, you know, so.
Your questions have been answered, board members? Okay, thank you, sir. We have a motion to postpone with a second and we've had a lot of discussion and also within the motion, three options have been brought up. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to be clear, so the motion is, the things they're going to be, we're asking them to bring to us are what he just talked about, the, the possibilities of a shared parking agreement, the renumbering of the spaces, and then the occupancy figures, which was my big thing. Those are the three things, right? Okay.
And if I could opine, if they think of something else between now and the next meeting, I think it'd be fair for them to bring it if there's an option that no one at this meeting has thought of.
Absolutely.
Well, it already looks like one of those three items are not going to happen.
Yeah.
He's not going to get the agreement. I don't see why pushing this off another month is going to help out any.
My, I, I would say that you shouldn't have gotten up here and said that to us if you couldn't back it up with facts in terms of the occupancy being less now than it was before. And if it was sent, it was sent, but I want to, I want to, I mean, this is where I, I want to grant it. I mean, I, I think it's great, but I, I want to know that because if that's, if that's not true and if this is going to be more people and you guys came in here and said that, that's kind of a big deal.
Sir, we're, this is between the board unless the board member has a specific question for. Sir, please. I, yeah, I, I have a higher comfort level and I'll vote yes on the motion because I think it's important that not only this board sees it, the members of the public see it and Stan has an opportunity to vet it for correctness. So I'm prepared to vote yes on the motion. Mr. Butts? He's got a question, I think he's got an answer. Could we hear the answer?
Yeah.
Do you have a question?
If he's got that answer to the question I've been asking several times, the occupancy figures, if he has it now somehow, yeah.
Are you asking him to provide the occupancy figures now?
I mean, I guess I'm asking if he's got, yeah.
I've asked it several times, if he's found them now, yeah.
Okay, sir.
Yeah, I wish it was easy as that, this particular, the programs I play on my phone, I just, it's my laptop in my car, I could load it up, find it and send it to Mr. McLean. I can, that's the best I can do at the moment.
Okay. All right, I, 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 thank you, sir. I think we need time to vet this.
I would support the motion too.
Okay. I will vote no if we continue the way we're going. I think we need time to vet this, I think it needs to get looked at and I think the public needs to see this information.
I agree.
That's going to have an impact on my vote. I don't think we have enough information before us here tonight and that's my thought. I think the, I mean, I personally think the occupancy is one of the biggest things, even though we can't base it, like Steve was saying, I mean, it's hard to bait, but, but then again, it comes down to the occupancy. If, we do have discretion, if we can reasonably tie it into our standards, that might be a realistic test that gives everyone involved, whether it's the board, the applicant, or the, an opportunity to make sure that this is a good compromise for everybody. Ms. McAlpin?
So, Mr. Chair, are we able to provide a conditional variance if that number does come in? If, let's say it does tomorrow, he is able to provide to Mr. McLean that the number's actually less, can we, can we then have, can we, can we make a motion that says if the occupancy at Seela's was 50, his occupancy shows it's 40, can we approve the variance? If it is not, then can we make a motion that it would be tabled?
Well, we can, but I will say right now, we've got a motion and I guess it would rely on if that motion's going to be changed, that the motion maker and seconder either withdraw that motion and come up with a new one or amend the motion accordingly. Because we do have a motion and a second on the table and.
Okay, or we could vote to, to deny that motion. That motion wouldn't pass and we can make a new motion.
Sure, somebody can make another motion, right? You bet.
I'm not willing to change my motion. It makes me very uncomfortable to do something of this magnitude with contingencies.
Heroical on the motion. Any further discussion? Mr. McLean, I think we're ready for a motion, a roll call.
Gesund.
Yes.
Krug.
Yes.
McKelpin.
No.
Ullar.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Butts.
No.
Evans.
Yes. And our next meeting is when, sir?
Be the second Monday in February, which will be February the 11th.
Okay, so the second Monday for everyone here, this will be on our agenda and we, you won't receive another notice, the continuation of this hearing, postponement. And we believe it would bode the applicant well to make sure that they get that information to us well before our packet goes out to give time, staff time to take a look at that, also members of the public. So, sir, at this point, you've been postponed to the February meeting. Thank you very much for all your time and effort and ultimately I think this is going to be a nice project. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, briefly before we move on. For the February 11 meeting, I will be out of town on vacation. However, the city manager, Mr. Baumgarten, has agreed to stand in for me for, for anything on the docket for February.
We welcome him in as the chief zoning administrator for the city. Okay.
After an adequate period of haze.
Our, do we have any other business, staff or?
Yes, one item.
Excuse me, excuse me. Members of the public? We do have the agenda to continue, but if you want to speak, go ahead and do it quietly Mr. McLean.
I've had some conversations with the planning firm, Carlisle-Wartman, regarding some planning and zoning basics, you know, both for the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Carlisle has provided some pricing for that event and it falls within what we have budgeted for, for development. So we're pursuing some, some meeting dates, possibly in February for, for a joint training session between planning and ZBA.
Oh, great. Very good.
It's, I've undertaken a similar program that that firm put on in a previous community. It was, it was very valuable, both, both on the planning and zoning side of things. So I think that'd be excellent training for everybody.
I took that same program from him up at Oakland County last fall, no, last spring. Really good.
And then if possible too, I'd like to see if possibly the city attorney would be available to kind of give an update on things related to the Open Meetings Act as well.
Okay, yes, that's always good, definitely. Okay. All right, excellent, fantastic. Anything else from the board out of their business? No? Councilmember Gavin.
Hello.
Thank you once again for attending.
Absolutely, thank you.
Here you have it. Liaison report.
I do, yeah, just a couple real quick things, won't take up too much of your time. At the last meeting, the council voted to renew the DDA director's contract for the next two years, as well as passing a resolution of support for the Ouldland reduction. That was based on kind of a new extensive metrics, matrix, that would hopefully give us a little bit better idea of benchmarking in terms of being able to determine success or failure of, of the actual reduction itself.
Excellent, well, thanks again for coming and give us that update.
Thank you all.
At this point now, I'll open the floor up for public comments. Does anyone have any comments? Please come up.
Wendy Zabramski, still. Greg, you know, your comment about parking on the street, I live on Gardner, Amiches has two legal spots. Somehow they were allowed to do this ad and ad and ad.
Some municipal parking lots are close by, that's why.
But there's only a row. They park down the street, okay? They have, I've complained in the plane. You guys are not sticking to those guidelines and that's scary, that's real scary. But, you know, you, I want to remind you, you just turned down in last summer, parking, not enough parking for the chemical salon. If you recall, you guys, you know, turned that down because they were too far from a municipal parking lot and they only have a little bit around there and they would park on the street. And you did turn that down, I just want to remind you, you know, just because it's a great business and I agree, all they have to do is not have the outdoor. And he did say restaurant, bar outside. And that's scary too. But all he has to do is eliminate the outside and he can have a business. He has other Green Lanterns, they don't have, all have outside. It's not necessary. And it puts cars in, on the streets and it's happening over and over again and something has to be done about parking. I hear a parking study being done, I don't know if it's done yet, but, you know, it's not fair to the residents. And yes, you know, my husband's been there since 84 in that house, he's been in Berkeley all his life. It's just, you know, it's just not fair to the residents. We have parking on one street, on one side of the street, park on the other side in the fire lane, you know, and yes, they get ticketed, but all of us to have any guests or anything, there's not enough parking. You have family, you have, you know, I, I've got a grandson living with me going to school, you know, there's no parking. When, you know, the restaurants are all taking it up. It's just not right and you need to follow your guidelines.
Thank you for your comments. Sir?
Hello, thank you again. You know, I just wanted to bring up a couple things, you know, somebody had mentioned that, you know, regard, regardless of whether or not they're adding a patio, that the problems exist throughout Berkeley and that's not going to change it and, and nobody else is having to discuss the other issues in parking, but the, the reason why we are discussing this because they are, they are required to request a variance. So that, it was legitimate, the reason why they were before us. So the fact that other places in Berkeley have parking issues, that's, that's, has nothing to do with why they're here today. I mean, the requirements say that they have to get a variance because they're adding something to the outside, you know. And also, I was going to ask, and I didn't want to get back up earlier, but I forgot, the very first parking lot that they show seems to be a lot closer, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I think if I look, you look at the picture, the way it is up there and then you look at their, their parking lot layout, it seemed like it was a little bit away from the sidewalk, whereas right now the tail end of the car might even be overhanging the sidewalk, depending on how long of a vehicle is. I would suggest if they're going to put bike, bike rack, put it there so that the, it pushes the parking lot away from the, the street. And, you know, I, I kind of forgot what I was going to say as far as, there was, there's one other point, but thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
I know what I was going to say. You know, they were talking about how pushing it off a month was going to cost them money, but you know, they've had the property for quite a while and, you know, if, if they would have had their plans a little bit earlier, they could have probably started this process earlier rather than being pushed against to the point where now they've been six or eight months, you know. So the fact that you guys postponed it for a month is really not, shouldn't be a concern, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
I have a question. You mentioned the DDA. If, if they, if a city, if a, a business in the city expanded to include outdoor parking or outdoor eating, would they have to come before the, the variance committee if they added something to enhance their establishment like the DDD, the DDA is asking of?
We would have to look at factors such as, you know, what, you know, what is their current parking requirement?
Really, I mean, that's what I'm saying. I mean, if they added something just for seasonal.
If, if they can meet the, basically the criteria that we have, you know, by ordinance, they would not need a variance.
But they're, but the DDA is encouraging to add more seating outdoors.
Well, I think what he's saying is it's on a case-by-case basis.
It is, I mean, it is a case-by-case.
It's not automatic that just because someone does something that complies, you know, the DDA recommendations, that they automatically have to go here. Each, each, each development is unique in its factors and if they satisfy the zoning ordinance, they don't need to come here.
Right.
It's only when they need a variance from the zoning ordinance because they don't meet the standard, then they have to come here.
And your design guidelines are, are just that, they're, they're a guideline whereas the ordinance is law.
Anything else? Anything else from our members? With that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you for attending.
Thank you.